Okay, we're now recording and I am admitting both guests and they are both in the room and I am recording.
Okay, so I'd like to call the city council meeting of November 5th, 2020 to order. First, before the roll call though, pursuant to the updated Illinois Attorney General Guidance to Public Bodies on the Open Meetings Act during the COVID-19 pandemic, dated July 2nd, 2020, aldermen and elected officials of the city of Wooddale may participate in public meetings of the city without being, without being physically present in compliance with the established conditions, I'm sorry. Yeah, roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino. Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sismarski.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Catalano.
Here, here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
And Mayor Police.
Did we miss him?
Yes, I missed Alderman Roy Wesley.
Okay, declare a court president, please stand, join the pledging allegiance.
To the flag.
Thank you, Tony. Alright.
Alright, need a motion to move the minutes of October 15th, 2020, who is the motion?
The move.
Second. Okay, Alderman Sismarski and Alderman Woods, second. Any corrections? Correction.
Was, that wasn't me, that was.
Alderman Jacob.
Alderman Jacob.
Correction and the second, I'm sorry. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next. I have a little communication this evening. Do we have any of those citizens that are in, do they, would they like to speak? Do we know, any comments? Okay, hearing none, the mayor's report, we did have the earth flag presentation, but due to the updated COVID mitigation regulation with the meetings being held via Zoom this week, we will not conduct an in-person presentation of the earth flag this Thursday, November 5th. We'll be working with scarce and DuPage County Environmental Committee on setting a new date. So basically, we're removing this off the agenda for tonight. And that concludes my report, Mr. Murmas, managers recount.
Thank you, I have two items this evening, the first item is our final yard waste pickup is on November 30th and December 1st, depending on your normal day of service. My second item is I am pleased to announce that the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency has determined that the city of Wooddale will retain its current rating as a Class 5 community and this helps our residents get a 25% discount on their flood insurance premium, so it's a very nice program. The savings is a tangible result of the flood mitigation activities that the city works hard to implement and protects lives and reduces property damage. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda, I have if no objections, we have seven items on the consent agenda, anybody object to anything?
No.
Then I need a motion.
And make a motion to approve the consent.
Is that Alderman Jacob? And Alderman Sismarski second?
Yep.
Please, let's, let's remember, this is back to Zoom, so say, say who you are and then make the motion, this way for the record, it's all there. We need a roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina. Alderman Messina.
Alderman Messina.
I'm mute, sorry, yes, yes, sorry, I'm mute.
And that passes, next, I need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, a resolution to approve an agreement for facade and site improvements at 414, 420 East Irving Park Road and 422 East Irving Park Road in amount not to exceed $128,232.36. Item number two.
I'll make the motion.
Hold on, hold on, I can read them all first, hold on. Item number two, the ordinance for the recreation to allow parking lot improvements at 414 through 420 East Irving Park Road and 422 East Irving Park Road, Wooddale. Item number three, a resolution approving a non-exclusive license agreement for use of city property for parking at 414, 420 East Irving Park Road, 422 East Irving Park Road, Wooddale. Item number four, an ordinance granting a variance to allow construction of a patio as a side yard obstruction at 417 Woodside Drive, Wooddale. Item five, a resolution authorizing the city of Wooddale to enter into agreement to purchase a body handling system and supporting software from CDS Office Technologies not to exceed $87,610. Item number six, ordinance repealing and restating the city of Wooddale's investment policy as set forth in Article 5, Section 1.5009 of the Wooddale Municipal Code. I hear a lot of background noise. Item number seven, a resolution designating the Wooddale Bank and Trust and Windtrust Community Bank as the banking institution for the city of Wooddale, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Sorry, yes.
My second. Okay, roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning and building, Alderman Jacob.
Uh, no report, mayor.
Thank you, public health and safety and judiciary, Alderman Sorrentino.
Report, mayor.
Thank you, public works, Alderman Catalano.
I have two, mayor. The resolution adopting the city of Wooddale Engineering Design and Development Standard Manual. I don't know if we have a presentation from Director Lang?
Yes, thank you, chairman, let me just take a second and share my screen here. Is everyone seeing that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll just briefly touch on a few of the items that we discussed at the September 24th committee meeting, there was a great deal of interest in the topsoil specification used by the city and staff was asked to verify that the specification exceeded that of the correlating IDOT standard spec. After reviewing both specifications, although there's not a wide array of variants with pulverized, pulverized topsoil, we did verify that our specification exceeded that of IDOT by regulating it to have an organic content between 1 and 10% and to be free of stones and debris greater than one inch. We were also requested to add some language regarding site abandonment of, by the contractor to our standard contract, which Attorney Bond drafted some language that we will include to future construction contracts, stipulating that the contractor not abandon the site for a period of greater five days without previously notifying the city. I've also included in your memo some information regarding trench backfill compaction that was discussed at the meeting. This was in relation to not only roadway projects, but trench backfill as it relates to storm sewer projects and other utility projects. Although I couldn't find any type of standard for lift, lifts for trench backfill, which we had discussed, typically a construction contract would stipulate that a certain compaction level, usually 96% or greater, be achieved by the contractor for trench backfill and the means and method by which this is attained is determined by the contractor and there's various equipment, rollers or mechanical compactors that can be used to achieve this. I also corrected several misprints and changed some wording for clarity that were discussed at the meeting. And as requested, a searchable document will be added to the city's website as well as some links to some commonly used standards for both residents and contractors. We also had some late addition, late additional changes to our lighting standards. The reason being that we had one of our engineers who is currently doing one of our roadway projects review them and he had several suggested changes, so I apologize for the late addition of these. They are rather minuscule though, they're summarized there on the screen for you to see. To allow for lower temperature light bulbs, as most municipalities are doing, is becoming industry standard. It also eliminated the Type 5 luminaire for roadways, this is a 360-degree luminaire, which is not typically seen on roadways, most roadway luminaires have a forward throw. And it also allows for cabinet-mounted photocells and pedestal-mounted controllers for just ease of maintenance. So that concludes my presentation and I'm glad to open it up to any questions or discussion.
Anybody have any questions?
I have one question, mayor.
Who is that, Alderman Woods?
Alderman Woods.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, Alan, on the soil, 1 to 3% organic manner and then no stones bigger than one inch or aggregate bigger than one inch, is there a percentage on that or can we have a pile of one-inch aggregate with a couple pebbles of dirt in it? I'm just saying, sometimes you see them spread the dirt and like every square inch has a stone in it. And, and, and so if you're saying that it, it can have, you know, let's say the parkway in front of somebody's house, you know, it doesn't stones in it, that's acceptable, but if you're saying it can have 200 stones in it, that doesn't seem to be acceptable.
So the size is related to the, the size of the debris itself, so no clods or stones larger than one inch of diameter throughout the project limits.
Right, but there's, but there's no quantity, right, it's just, that's a size limit, not a quantitative limit. So, using, using as an example, the parkway in front of somebody's house, 50 feet by, let's say five feet, right, 250 square feet, 300 rocks in there.
Right, I see what you're saying. And a lot of the committee's concerns were more related to quality control on the part of the engineer and the city, which we're going to continue to work closely with our engineers to ensure that the materials which are delivered to the site are of, you know, the standard that we're looking for and, you know, putting the burden on the contractor to prove that they're upholding the specification. So the, most specs for construction contracts will require the topsoil to be laid and raked and free of those types of debris.
Okay.
So I guess, you know, that would be our method for controlling that.
Alright, that's acceptable.
Noting some type of.
Alan, and I think you said it, but are we looking at like two inches of topsoil underneath that sod or, or I heard 10%? Could you clarify, please?
So typical backfill for topsoil is between four and six inches.
Perfect, even better. Alright, any other questions? Alright, I hear no other questions, I need a motion to approve the engineering standards.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, Alderman Woods.
Alderman Catalano made the motion.
Okay, roll call please, we have to do all roll calls since we are Zoom, even though it's not money. Go ahead.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that passes.
Okay, next is an ordinance declaring property owned by the city of Wooddale surplus for the purpose of selling. That is my motion.
Second, Alderman Jacob, second.
Alderman Jacob, second, any questions on this?
Yeah, what are we selling, mayor?
Uh, there's a list, I believe it's five cars or trucks, utility trucks, is that correct? Who wants to take that, Mr. Lane?
Sure, yeah, that's, it's five police vehicles that have recently been replaced and are not otherwise needed by any other department. It's two of the interceptor SUVs, two of the Ford F-150 pickups and one police interceptor car.
And, and if a residence wants to see, where would they go to see about purchasing property?
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
After these are, thank you, mayor, after these are approved for sale by the council, they will be posted on publicsurplus.com for a period of 14 days, where people will have the opportunity to bid on them.
Okay, thank you.
Any follow-ups on that? Alright, roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah.
And that passed.
And that's the end of my report, mayor.
Thank you, finance and administration, Alderman Woods.
Thank you, mayor, I have two reports, one, an ordinance of the city of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois, amending ordinance number 0-20-002, authorizing the acquisition through condemnation of a parcel commonly known as 310 East Irving Park Road for the purpose of economic development, that is my motion.
Sorry, yes.
Second, Messina.
We have a motion, a second.
Very briefly, your honor.
Hold on, hold on.
Randy.
Randy was second, okay, go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, just as a reminder to the council, if you recall, we had an executive session to discuss the acquisition of this property by negotiation. The council gave additional authority, I, once you do that, that reopens negotiations under the Illinois Eminent Domain Act. Once that happens, you have to either reach a resolution by a negotiated acquisition or you're required to terminate those good faith negotiations in order to proceed forward, so I sent two letters and several phone calls to Council 4310, I did not receive a response. So I have terminated a good faith negotiation, so that's the reason that this matter is before you, we discussed that this would be, if we didn't hear back or we couldn't reach an agreement, this would be the next step, so we will move forward with the condemnation action, again, under the limitations of time that are imposed by the 18 Judicial Circuit Court Order in relation to COVID-19 as well, so just as a reminder to you all.
Thank you, any other questions before I call a roll? Roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that passes.
Nice, next, local COVID-19 stimulus package. I don't know if anybody is going to speak to it, but as I reached out and talked to Brad and Brad reached out to Grant, I talked to the mayor, we've kind of gone back and forth looking at the things that were out there and knowing that some people would like to do the water, some want to do the voucher. I think in talking to everybody, what I came up with is a kind of a cross between the two and that we would, and this would be my motion, we would do two. Let me, let me finish, so we would do two vouchers for $20 apiece. The vouchers can be spent at any of the stores in Wooddale.
Right.
The, the voucher could also be used to pay down your water bill, so if you wanted to take one $20 voucher and pay your water with that and take the other $20 voucher and go out and have a pizza somewhere, you could do that. If you wanted to take both vouchers, put it on your water bill, my thought was that it allowed the residents to spend it the way they thought fit and that would benefit that person or family the most and that in turn would help the businesses the most also. And so we wouldn't limit the, the businesses they could spend them at as long as the business was willing to accept the voucher in the program. So that would be my motion to provide each resident with two $20 vouchers to be used that local businesses in the city of Wooddale.
Alderman Woods, can I, can I get the point of clarity?
Sure.
Yes.
One second, one second. First of all, do I have a second before we?
I made the second.
Okay, Mr. Murmas, go ahead, I have a couple of questions, just wanted to make sure myself, go ahead.
I was questioning, because the amounts in the original staff memo added up to a $20 voucher. I was under the impression that we were still doing an aggregate of $20 with two separate $10 vouchers. Two $20 vouchers, was that a mistake or is that the intent?
To address that, that was the original conversation, I thought that two vouchers would act better, look bigger and spend better and probably help better across the broad section of the community. And then in talking to other people who are wanting to do stuff with the water and where we're at financially, I kind of morphed that into, well, there'll be two coupons slash certificates, but to raise that as opposed to, so I wanted to do the water and the certificate, so this way if we morph them together, the people then can use that certificate however they deem best for, for their family or their financial situation.
So this is a total of $40?
Correct.
Okay.
So Jeff, basically instead of putting $20 on everybody's water bill and then the $20, what do you want to call it, Wooddale bucks or something? You give them $40 and they can use it for the water or they can use it for restaurants, my question is, are these strictly to help the restaurants and bars or is this also going to be open to the jewel target and can we even do this, Mr. Byrne?
I don't know, Jewel will accept it.
That's what I'm saying.
Can I, can I, real quick?
Go ahead, Mr. Murmas.
Uh, the intent of the program was, I believe, was to be only for those businesses that were impacted by this most, most recent round of the governor's enhanced mitigation, which solely affected restaurants and, and bars.
Okay, and that's why I wanted, I just wanted to make sure we had that clarification because I know that's what we were targeting.
Right.
And let's face it, anybody that gets those coupons, they might not want to go out, but they may be willing to put it on their water bill, so we basically consider both things as one.
So, for, for clarity, for clarity, you want to exclude food stores?
Yeah.
Joel Franks?
Yep.
That exclude Whitehead Target?
Yes.
Yes, because they're all open, the restaurants right now are the ones that can't serve inside anymore.
Right.
And the bars, right, that's the only ones that.
You can still go in 7-Eleven and, and buy a Slurpee, but if you want to sit down.
They have hot dogs, they have hot dogs and stuff too, the same as the, some of the gas stations have food. I'm just trying to get a better handle on not being the, the guy that decides the winners and losers again, that's always my position. So if you want to carve out grocery stores, those are pretty easy to define and, and everything else is open, because I view this as two parts, one to help the businesses, but also we have to understand that residents are earning also, so I like this program better because it helps both. It gives, it puts a few dollars in the resident's hand of which they can spend, spend at the business, so it's kind of a dual win, resident and business, that was my thought process when I thought this, thought about this, if you want to take out the jewel, the target and, and Franks, those are the only three that I can pick up, the big stores. I guess I would be okay with that, but.
Yeah, I'll make the most to take out the grocery stores.
We, we have a motion, we have a second, Mr. Murmas, go ahead.
Yeah, if, if Brad or, or Pat want to chime in after I make my statement, I believe we work off of a consolidated list, I think there was about 32 businesses that were originally impacted by these mitigation efforts and those were just the restaurants and the bars, I believe we work off that list, is that correct? Brad and Pat, I'm pretty sure we already have that list and there's no jewel or target or anything on that list.
That, yeah, mayor.
Fine, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that is correct and there was, the reason for that was to, you know, provide assistance in the whole, for, you know, the, those that might otherwise be impacted and there's certain that aren't on the list that have been thriving during this, this time period, so it gives that, some latitude and gives some relief to the, to those. Right, and, and I get that, so carving out the grocery, I'm okay with that.
Alright.
And the secretary agrees too.
The secretary agrees, so it's those, that list of 30 and I'm sure we'll have it on the website, any other questions?
How's, how's it going to be distributed for the, for the water bill?
No, because the water bill, so let's say you live in Dominions, they have one water bill for the tower, only, they're only going to get 40 bucks for the whole tower, that's not going to work.
Right.
I think Mr. Wilson might have something else, Mr. Wilson, you want to answer that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I was just going to make one comment, that we're also going to reach out to the establishments on that predetermined list and, you know, let them know theoretically, somebody could not want to participate, so we would certainly bet if they were, want to. We're going to do with this particular thing to catch, you know, the Dominions of the world, Brooklyn on the Green, even there's a five-unit building across the street from City Hall, we're actually going to do a direct mailer with the vendor to get to every unit and every like apartment or condo in those multifamily ones in addition to the single-family homes, so we are going to do a direct mailer, kind of like the newsletter, basically, just to every residential address or mailbox throughout town.
Got it.
Okay, and Brad, this, this $40 basically, what's it work out to, about 200, 250,000?
Somewhere between 160 and 200,000 if they're all redeemed. But no, I guess is, they're at about what, 25 to 30% redemption on their food vouchers, so not expecting 100% to be redeemed, but that would be the high end of it, would be about 200,000.
Well, and I figure with the able to pay your water bill, we'll probably get a higher percentage because like I said, those that are not going to go to the restaurants, they will put the vouchers into their water bill and, and take care of that problem. Do we have a time limit on these vouchers? Are they going to be dated like February of next year or what? So there's a cutoff or some, or can, or you can't do that with coupons anymore, I don't know.
Real quick, just real quick, I would think we would need to establish some sort of cutoff parameters because you don't want that sitting out there in perpetuity, it's not good for bookkeeping sakes, we're going to have to establish some sort of.
That's why I'm asking, so I wasn't sure if we can or can't. So, okay, so February 28th, 2021? Or maybe, maybe it's going to take a month to get them out, I don't know.
February 28th sounds good, because if it takes them a month to get it out, it still gives them January, February.
Right.
I agree.
Okay. And so we have a motion, a second, any other questions?
Mayor, I have a question, Alderman Jacob.
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
Are, the list that Brad, Brad or someone's going to call to let the businesses know?
Yes.
Are the residents going to get that list?
Yes.
And also, can we put in our next newsletter or in our water bill? Little caption, what's going on?
I can chime in real quick on that. Grant Poplouskas is already kind of prepared a lot of the marketing materials, assuming the council would want to pass this. It's just fine tuning them now and we are planning a, a big PR piece. It's just fine tuning them now and we are planning a, a big, uh, PR piece on this, it'll probably be in the Herald as well.
Alright.
Okay, so, so basically we're looking at two $20 coupons. Any other questions? No other questions, roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino. Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes, I'm muted.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yep, yep.
And that passes.
That ends my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, airport noise, Alderman Jacob.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, under stormwater commission, uh, basically Alderman Wesley is not here, I will, there's no report.
Good, Mayor. Mayor.
You're not stormwater commission.
No, no, sir, you're under, under other business, you finished stormwater. Uh, what you'll be, thank the, is the chief on?
The chief should be on, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to thank the, uh, police department for continuing and doing the, uh, traffic control study on Maple Avenue that was requested by Public Health, Safety and Ethics Board.
Oh yeah, you're welcome, I know, uh, we got that finalized today, so it did show, uh, a decent amount of volume of, uh, traffic, uh, but I think the averages too were a little bit over the speed limit, so we'll turn on the, uh, the message portion of it too now.
Alright, appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Under approval, list of bills, Alderman Woods.
Sure, thank you, well, let me, uh, get to that, uh, again, I've got to run, uh, a couple different, uh, screens here. I'll make, uh, first, uh, uh, for clarification, right now in the packet, the list, the total, uh, the list of bills is 498,815.59. We'll be removing, uh, one of the checks for 415, $450, uh, that was meant for the Park District, but since they canceled the, the breakfast, we'll just be pulling that check off the list of bills. So the new updated, uh, amount is 498,365.59. That is my motion to approve.
As far as you second.
Okay, motion, a second, do we have any questions on any of the bills? Will call not be recognized. Oh, who's that, Sonny?
Catalano.
Go ahead, Alderman.
In reference to that, so they're not going to have the breakfast, um, for the veterans or they're going to have the, um, the memorial?
I can chime in on that real quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Murmas.
Yes, we will have the, uh, memorial moving forward as planned, we will comply with the governor's order with the 25, uh, seat, uh, capacity. I will put the updated final information in, in your packets in the manager's report tomorrow, but we are, we are proceeding with that.
Thank you.
I believe all they're going to do is give, uh, the commander's going to give a couple opening remarks, uh, the flags, the, the rifle, I believe, and then a closing prayer and they're, and they're done.
And, and what time is that?
11:00.
11:00.
Thank you.
Alright, alright, so we have a motion, we have a second, on the bills, I need a roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah.
And that passes. Next, we need to adjourn into executive session for review of official minutes, land acquisition and pending litigation. So remember, once we adjourn this meeting, we are all going to stay on, Mr. Murmas is going to clear the room and then we will start executive session.
So.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and who was second, was that Alderman Woods?
Alderman Woods.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Okay, just hang on for a few minutes, Jeff.